Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council and a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the Groundwater Sustainable Agency. I call this meeting to order Wednesday, April 16th, 2025 at 6 o'clock. City Clerk.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, enter ID 842-2734-8270. Press *9 to raise your hand to comment and *6 to unmute yourself to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov, or by regular mail at 205 West Forest Street, Madera, California 93637. We'd like to also remind the public that Wordly is accessible by scanning the QR code that's available on the agenda. It's also available on our live stream on YouTube.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. At this time, I call order, please.
Mayor Gaigos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zachariah.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. Absent. Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas.
Ah here.
Thank you for that. We have an invocation by Pastor Roger Leach from Valley West Christian Center, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I started a prayer, I just wanted to say that everybody knows that this was a week of Passion Week, and we're celebrating the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ. And I just wanted to comment that about six years ago, I was in Jerusalem, and there at the synagogue where Jesus met with his disciples at the Last Supper, where Pope Paul II, at the year 2000, gave a Mass in the same particular location. And there, not only did he give the Last Supper, but it was also there that his disciples saw him a few days later alive. And I enjoy going to that place. And so with that, John Chapter 14, verse number one, says this, "Jesus said to his disciples, 'Don't be worried; have faith in God and have faith in me.' There are many rooms in my Father's house. I wouldn't tell you this unless it was true. I am going to prepare a place for each of you. After I've done this, I will come back and take you with me, and then we will be there together. You know the way where I'm going.'" And then Thomas, always doubting, said, "Lord, we don't even know where you're going. How can we know the way?" And then Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." So, Lord, tonight, we thank you. We thank you for this time in history that we can celebrate your death, but also your resurrection. We thank you for life everlasting. So, Lord, I pray a blessing over this meeting tonight. I pray that ye will continue to guide and direct each one of the council people as they continue to do business for the city of Madera. We thank you for them, and we ask your blessing for them and their families. And I pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Pastor Leach. We appreciate it. Moving on, approval of the agenda. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? If not, I would look to entertain a motion.
Thank you, motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, let their record reflect. Councilwoman Evans is in the House. With that, the agenda has been approved. Next, City Clerk Gonzalez.
The next item is a proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Month.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call up the Food Bank and the Rescue Mission, and anybody else representing them tonight. At this time, we, as the city council and mayor, we are giving the proclamation for National Volunteers Month. Whether the month of April is dedicated to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout our nation, and where this month of April is dedicated in honoring the significant contributions volunteers made by generous donations to their time and talents to worthy causes. The city of Madera has an outstanding group of volunteers who have given willingly of their time to provide a great service and meet the needs of all our citizens. Us here at the city of Madera and the council recognize all these volunteers and their civic duties and engagement at this cornerstone of our strong city that we live in. So hereby, C.C. Gaigos, Mayor of the city of Madera, and behalf of the council, we hereby give us proclamation, April 2025, National Volunteers Month to Madera Rescue Mission and Madera County Food Bank. And so this goes. And just a side note, we could not service this community when it comes to food without the Food Bank and all their volunteers. We could not service our community unhoused without the support of the Rescue Mission. These two gentlemen are the ones who start at the top. It happens at the top. And without their support and leadership, we would be in dire strait as it comes to our residents in the city of Madera. So, gentlemen, on behalf of all of us, not only are you the leaders, all your volunteers have been leaders because they're out in the community telling everyone all that you do. They are your cheerleaders. I've seen it firsthand, all the great things that you're doing. So, we thank you for that. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. We at the mission appreciate the partnership with the city of Madera. We think Madera is a unique place. We love to serve the people here. As you know, we had our ribbon cutting on Monday for our six tiny homes, and it was very exciting to see the community come together and see what we're doing here at the mission and serving the unhoused. Now, the unhoused will be housed. So, we thank you for all your support and prayers.
As most of you know, unless you're under a rock, me and Jesse have been very busy expanding our organizations, and it's been a thrill working with him and the Madera Rescue Mission. You know, we work very closely together, and we've been doing this not only through our organizations, but if you don't know, we are very close as family as well because Jesse's grandson has married my daughter, and so we get to serve in that capacity as well. So, but thank you all for not only what you guys do in your community, but thank you for showing up to the ribbon cutting over at the Madera County Food Bank. What a turnout it was. And I could tell you, for the first, you know, couple of weeks we've been in our place, all our employees are very thrilled for the expansion and to be able to work into a bigger capacity and have the food bank that we do. So, thank you, guys.
Amazing work, gentlemen. Thank you. You know, we're behind you 110% if you ever need it. Moving on, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Next item is public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Perfect. Thank you, City Clerk. At this time, I open it up for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, or good evening, City Council, Mayor. Members of the city of Madera. My name is Maurice, and I attended the Airport Advisory Committee, and I believe in January, I did comment on the fact that it did not have a quorum, and it's still struggling. So, I wanted to keep that in the spotlight and bring up the fact that we just had a meeting last week, or there was a meeting, and there was no quorum. And I have submitted my application. If you are all interested in filling vacancies on that advisory committee, I'm willing, and just to help. So, I spoke to Steve and Jose. They were very helpful, very knowledgeable guys, and I appreciate it. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that again, there was no quorum at the Airport Advisory Committee. I'm willing to help.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Diana Combs, and I'm here on behalf of the Relay for Life Heart of California Leadership Team. First off, I would like to start off by thanking the city of Madera for all of your support for Relay for all its years. This year is the 40th year of Relay, which will be held on April 26th at Town and Country Park, with the opening ceremony starting at 9:00 a.m. with a powerful speech given by the amazing councilwoman Anita Evans. And it's a family-friendly event, and we hope to see everybody out there. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, citizens of Madera. My name is India Bonostro, and I am here as a representative on behalf of Congressman Adam Gray. I came prepared beforehand with a big spiel on things that the congressmen have been doing, but just today, we opened up community project funding. So, I'm here to announce that. The House Appropriations Committee has announced that it will begin accepting requests for community project funding for the fiscal year of 2026. This process is a way of members of Congress to bring direct support to their districts by requesting funding that goes directly to their state or local governments. This year, our office has 15 slots open, and we can only select the most competitive requests for funding that meet all the guidelines. I have the papers right here, if I could pass it out to you all, that lay out the guidelines and the way that you can apply to be a part of the 15 slots that we have open. And all the requests are due by April 21st. Unfortunately, they are very quick. So, that is my time. And could I pass these out?
You can give them to our city clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. When I started this, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, for those that don't know me, which I believe all of you know me, I'm Maturo Martinez, Director for the Office of Senator Anna Cavallero. The first thing I do want to mention is the senator had the opportunity to host her Woman of the Year event at Madera Community College. Graciously, Councilmember Anita Evans was able to join us on behalf of the council. We did host some Madera women, which I did want to recognize as there were 12 women we honored with the senator. So, the first one was the Woman of the Year, and that will be Rosa from Madera. She is a community member from Madera. Oh, geez, I just had my paper. There we go. So, she was Honorable Woman of the Year. She is from Oaxaca County. She's a community volunteer. She was honored at the Capitol as well. The second one is Tricia Placentia. She's not necessarily from the city of Madera, but from Madera County, Chachalesean educator, Monica Bravo, Promotoran, and Community Leader, and then Christina Backstead, who is the Madera County Farm Bureau Executive Director. The senator is also working on some other legislation. Briefly, just see the Senate bills, and then the title, as time is limited. The first one is Senate Bill 72, the California Water Plan, Senate Bill 80, California Fusion Energy Research Initiative, Senate Bill 88, the Biomass Utilization for Carbon Reduction Act, Senate Bill 298, Clean Fuels for California Seaport Plan, Senate Bill 404, Metal Recycling Regulation Act, Senate Bill 419, Hydrogen Fuel Equity Act, SB 466, Chromium 6 MCL Legal Liability Protection, SB 509, Transnational Repression, SB 520, the Nurse-Midwifery Education and Workforce Act, SB 555, Workers' Stability Adjustment Act, SB 599, Atmospheric River Extended Range Forecasting, SB 624, Faster Outreach and Support for Tax Education Readiness, the Foster Act, SB 643, Carbon Deterrence Removal Grant, SB 690, California Invasion of Privacy Act Revisions, SB 734, Peace Officer Due Process, SB 769, the Golden State Infrastructure Corporation Act, and SB 808, Expedited Judicial Review of the Housing Accountability Act. All that information is on the senator's website. I do have more detailed information for anybody that wants more on a specific bill. Also, if you do submit letters of support that the congress member staff just mentioned, you could actually reach out to our office, and we could do letters of support to the congress member on behalf of any projects the city council pushes forward to the congress. That would be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk Gonzalez, any comments online or on Zoom?
We have no written public comment and no one on Zoom.
Thank you for that. I closed public comment on this time, and we will be moving on to the consent calendar. City Clerk Gonzalez.
Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to my colleagues. Is there anything they'd like to pull? I see none. I open it up for public comment. Do we have anybody on Zoom or online?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I closed public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to next item.
There are no workshops. Section D is Item D1, Caltrans Highway Project 06-0Y180 on State Route 145 in Madera County Landscape Maintenance Agreement within state right-of-way on Route 145 within the city of Madera.
Thank you. And that will be presented by our Director of Engineering. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. This is the California Highway Project. I'll skip the number on State Route 145 in Madera County Landscape Maintenance Agreement within the state right-of-way on Route 145 within the city of Madera. And there it goes. And the purpose of the meeting is to consider approving a letter wherein the city council concurs with an update to existing landscape maintenance agreement within state right-of-way on Route 145 within the city of Madera. I'll probably go ahead and just call that agreement from here on out. A little bit of a brief update. Caltrans is essentially at 100% with the design plans for their Cap'n project. That's, for the most part, that was an overlay between the south side of the city and the east along Madera Avenue, then Yosemite Avenue. However, in downtown area, we have a road diet through there, and that is part of that plan set, and this construction is anticipated to begin in January 2026. It's moved a little bit in the last year or so in terms of, well, a little bit to a lot in terms of the date, but it looks like January 26th is going to is going to stay, or be pretty tight on that. Little bit of background, March 1st, council approved contribution up to $3 million for the purpose of including additional elements to the project originally identified as SR 145 Yosemite Avenue as a downtown Main Street plan. Landscaping did represent one of the elements of that $3 million. There was eight or 10 different elements to it that the $3 million is assistant paying. The city continues to work closely on various elements of the project, including with the most recent being in agreement, allowing them to adjust sewer and water valves at no cost to the city. That particular agreement came through on the last meeting. This landscape agreement is a standardized agreement. Amendments to the agreement are memorialized by virtue of adding exhibits of the areas to be landscaped along with the executed letter concurring with changes. This is a brand-new one to me. Essentially, the city will be signing a simple letter that says they agree with the additional exhibits to be added to an agreement, and the agreement itself is not modified. The agreement was first used at gas station on the northeast corner of Madera Avenue and Pecan Avenue. The purpose of the agreement is to affirm city responsibility to maintain all aspects of landscaping and equipment in the state right-of-way. Lighting, city shall maintain lights but pay power on non-safety lighting only. We haven't come to, they haven't asked for a specific agreement on that yet. I imagine that is probably coming. This is Exhibit A to the agreement. This is what was originally in the, as part of the original attachment to the agreement. It shows landscaping on Madera Avenue. The next exhibits show landscaping that was added to the Cap'n project for Caltrans. This is a section over on Madera Avenue at G Street, next to the Ford dealership. And then we move into downtown, and we have the roundabouts with landscaping through there. There are little boxes or red boxes along the side. Those are new trees that are being installed, and those will be maintained as well as part of this agreement. Moving on down the street, we show additional roundabouts and landscaping and a bowlabout. The bowlabout is actually at A Street, and then more landscaping at Lake Street. Landscape maintenance agreement, cost and timing. Non-highlighted areas remain property owner expenses. So, only the items shown in red are part of the agreement. The responsible entity to maintain, the city maintains the agreement, but there is a cost to it if the city maintains it. Parks has estimated the staff time. We took, they estimated the hours. Engineering took the hours and converted that into a cost, and that comes up to about $20,000 per year. Funding at present appears to be from the general fund, though that can, we have about 15 months or so to go ahead and figure that out, I would say. Other groups or organizations could also take responsibility for maintenance or a portion of the cost. As an example, this does run in downtown area near the Downtown Business Owners Association. They could be, it could be that we talk to them about some sort of partnership with regard to that. At present, staff estimates that the maintenance efforts would not commence for about 15 months. This, as I said earlier, this allows some time to determine how the maintenance and costs would be addressed. The recommended action for tonight is to adopt a resolution concurring with the update to the existing landscape maintenance agreement within the state right-of-way. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. If not, I open it up to public comment. City Clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom or online?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Engineering. Next item.
Item E1 is an informational report on potential demolition of two city-owned buildings.
And that will be our Parks Director, Abir.
Madam Mayor, Council, guests, Joe Abir, Parks Director, and I'm presenting Item E1, which is an informational report on the potential demolition of two city-owned properties. As you know, right now, the city is seeking direction from the council regarding the potential demolition of these two vacant city-owned buildings. One is the Mexican-American Center, Activity Center, and then the, actually, the former Parks Department Maintenance Building, which is commonly referred to as the Casa Building located at the corporate yard. Both facilities are in poor condition due to age, deferred maintenance, and long-term underuse. Our preliminary assessments indicate that restoring either building to a functional condition will require significant financial investment to address the structural issues, the code compliance, and then also the modern building, bring the building up to modern standards. We recommend that we explore whether to authorize the demolition of these structures and provide, and we're asking for direction regarding the next steps. The first building, the Mexican-American Activity Center, it was originally constructed in 1960. I think some of you are very familiar with this structure. It served as a community center and a gathering center for a variety of organizations and public meetings. It's been vacant. It's been vacant for quite some time. I think since COVID, it's not been used for city programming for several years. We've experienced vandalism incidents internally and externally. Concerns with the building's condition and structural integrity are based on identified deficiencies, which were actually, we had a tier seismic evaluation, which is included in your staff report. And the condition, the assessment was completed, but you can kind of see if you read through it and they actually just look at the pictures and I'll kind of give you a good, good summation of the the state of the building. This is where it's located, near the water tower. I might add that since it's so close to the water tower, that if this was a, this is a fire hazard and if something actually were to happen in this building, we should be very cognizant of that something might actually happen to the water tower as well. So there is some risk involved. This is what it looks like on the outside, as you know. These actually pictures don't really do it justice on the inside, but this is what what it looks like. If you looked at that report, you you could see some of the other things. The other building, it's a single-story structure and I just, I found this out as I was preparing the staff report, doing some research. I didn't know this for a fact, but this was originally a rental park property for the city. And then we have also used it most recently as office space and lounge for the Parks Maintenance Department staff. And I will add, my staff was located there and there's, there's some indication, they think the place is haunted and I can't, I can't really vouch for that, but that's what my team tells me. So I'm just saying, they heard strange noises in there. In two thousand twenty-three, we relocated that staff to the public works area into a renovated space and this, this whole building has been vacant since that time. While, while the building has served multiple capacities over the years, it now shows significant signs of wear and tear and would require substantial investment to return to a safe and usable condition. This is where it's located in the yard. And again, that's, it seems if you go over there, even if you drive by, it seems out of place with everything else. This is what it looks like on the outside. You can see it's, it's an older building. We've got the windows barred up, but it's quite old. Here's some of the inside view and like I said, I don't know if ghosts have walked through here, but that's what I've been told. Some more pictures of the inside as well. And, you know, we've had a lot of internal debate, cross-departmental discussion, and we were unable to come up with a clear, strategic, reasonable or practical reason to keep either building. Buildings have been supplanted by newer, more functional city facilities. You know, we have the John Wells Center, we've got Frank Bergon Senior Center, Pan Am Center, they've all been been functional long since this building was built. And the other thing is there's, there's an issue with ADA accessibility and adequate parking. Although we don't have any precise cost estimates at this time, preliminary evaluations suggest that repairing or even modernizing and bringing, bringing either building into compliance with with current building codes would likely exceed anything we would have to invest in it to move forward. Alternatives, you can elect not to do anything and leave both buildings in their current state. This would entail ensuring both buildings remain as secure as possible to prevent and avoid any further vandalism. Or you could direct staff to return to the council with an expenditure resolution budget minute related to condition, to the demolition of both structures. And that's the end of my report and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for that report. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Director Abir. Just a quick question regarding that building on the Mexican American building. That obviously the city owns that lot there. Any consideration of selling that? And if not, is it because that would be an easement for us to get to the water tower or?
We haven't even gotten that far yet. I think that right now we're just looking for a direction to move forward to, I mean, that might be one of the options that we consider. We, there's a lot of things in consideration is selling, turn it into a park, turn it into, I don't know, but we, you know, we'd have to explore those things.
You said we don't have a, so with the direction you would then bring us what the amount of the demo would be?
Yeah. And there's a lot of steps. We'd have to get an environmental, a CEQA, we'd have to do RFPs. I mean, there's a lot involved, but I think really the intent for this is to say, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing. Are you okay with it?
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rodriguez. I will take Councilmember Zachariah.
Just real quick, so would you say in your opinion, is there a need to keep these these buildings for your use since you've already moved out? I mean, is, if money wasn't an object, is it, is it worth the rebuilding because you need them or not?
I don't know how much, like I said in the report, I don't know how much it would cost it, but you know, if I spitballed it, I'd say no, you know, it's, it would take a lot to bring these back up to code, just looking at, you know, just, I'm not an expert on this, but I could tell you, you know.
But is building space a necessity right now that you say?
No, you know, and quite frankly, especially the Casa Building, that, that is way out of place. We could use that, that space in the yard for coverage for some of our equipment. As I think one of the reports I brought earlier a couple of months ago about when we built the, the park over at Rotary, we had our equipment sitting there outdoors for a long time, is exposed to the elements. So I think for the use for that building, I can't see it. The other building is so damaged that I don't know that we would have the resources to bring that to make it into anything. I know.
On its house, maybe?
Yeah, you know, maybe something like that, but I don't know. Yeah, it's, you know, we've had a lot of issues, you know, as far as just break-ins and people there. And I think Chief can attest to that. It's just, we've got it boarded up, but again, it's just a, a problem waiting to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, first thing, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it have asbestos in it? That would be one of the factors that I would be curious about if.
Yeah, we would have to get that, that study done. I mean, you know, before we demoed anything, we would have to have.
We still need that because they would still have to dress for the asbestos even in the demolition.
Yeah. And since I've been here, you guys, I've demoed two, two buildings so far, India Park and the Skate, Skate Park concession stand. And we had to go jump through all those hoops before we actually demoed the bill either, either, either place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, I'm here.
Thank you, Mayor. So within the last couple of months, there have been several reports about the demolition of the buildings. I think it would be good to also make an assessment as far as who expand opportunities for more facilities and also what's the plan for that decaying ones like the youth hut that's on the corner of Yosemite and Q Street.
That's on my radar.
Okay.
That wasn't in this report, but that's on the radar.
Yeah, just because I, I mean, like I said, within this last year, we've been calling for demolition, but I know that community members, I often hear from them that they want to have more opportunities to be able to use the facilities for community activities.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Joseph, I was talking to Ronaldo and I agree with the, we choose demolition and do something else, whatever recommendation later on in the future. So those two buildings are kind of old. So if it's going to cause more to repair, then, then it's not even needed right now, right?
No, we, we have, we have.
We choose demolition and do something.
Those two, I don't, you know, I don't.
I agree with that. So, so, thank you.
Councilmember Montez.
Oh yeah, I'm just curious, along the lines of testing for like asbestos or other, I think lead thing, is there, are there any tests that we're going to do for the bad juju in that one or we're just kind of?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, you know, I, I've only even actually been in that, that one building. I want to say maybe five times. And each time I, when I was going over there, I would either have my staff come to me or I'd stand outside and have them. So just.
Yeah, we don't want that spreading. No, I think just because of ongoing liability, right?
Yeah.
And then I'm sure just like other vacant buildings, we have to go and resecure. The same thing happened with the concession stand, right? We're having to go back out there and board it up, you know, staff time, wipe off graffiti, things like that. So I mean, I think that, you know, the, the plan for demoing would be best and then we can, and we're not utilizing them. Yeah, we could always use more room for staff, but I mean, again, you know, to consider his point, we have opportunity to build other facilities that we're not demoing and then rebuilding because they're going to be to current standard. I think that'd be the best bet.
That it? Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Just a quick comment, Director Haber. The report for the Mexican American Center was in depth detail where the actual building is sinking and there's a lot of major structure that it would be tax dollars that would have to pay for renovating that building. And again, it's our predecessors that it kind of just sat and wasn't taken care of. And so I'm in agreement of demolishing both those and maybe entertaining and bringing back to council a park because there's, that's the neighborhood that would really utilize that area, especially the, me and the water tower. We do want to be able to have access to that if something was to happen to our tower. With that, I see no more comments. I open it up for public comment. Anybody in the House? I see none. Anybody on Zoom or online? City Clerk Gonzalez.
Have none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I bring it back to my colleagues for a motion in a second.
It was informational, but do you want?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right.
A direction from us? I'm assuming you want to get back cost?
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, we're pretty much made up our minds. We just make sure you're in agreement with the direction that we're taking.
I, I, if we need to thumbs up, so I think we're good.
Okay, you have all seven.
Awesome.
Is that clear? All right. Thank you. Next item.
Is item E two, Madera Municipal Golf Course Update twenty twenty-five.
Thank you for that. That will be presented again by our Parks Director, Abir.
I know you guys thought you were done with me. So Alicia, can you help me with the next? Yeah, I haven't presented in a while. I was giving my colleagues.
And your first.
I know. All right. So it's me again doing item two, Madam Mayor, Council, guests. This is the annual Madera Municipal Golf Course Update. If you recall, I did this, I actually was looking at my notes. I actually did this April third of last year. And so we're back again, not, you know, pretty, pretty much on time. As you know, our existing lease agreement between the city and Sierra Golf Course Management for the operation of the management of Madera Municipal Golf Course was renewed in July of twenty twenty-three and we entered into an agreement for five years. This will expire in twenty twenty-eight at the end of June. As part of the agreement, the city committed to providing the city council with a minimum of one formal annual update on the status of the golf course operation. The following are highlights from our vendor. Increase in online booking has, has increased by thirty-eight percent. Our online presence and use of social media to drive players to the golf course remains a primary focus. Rounds played, you can see the progression where doing as of last year, thirty-nine thousand, which is an increase from twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-four food and beverage services, they sublet, subletting of the food and beverage operation to Sugar Pine Smokehouse, it continues to improve the overall experience for golfers in the community. Actually, I've gotten real good feedback from, from people about, about the operation there and it seems to be getting better and better. I think they had a little rocky start, but things, things have improved greatly. The Smokehouse has not only fulfilled its capital requirements in the contract, but has exceeded the required amount by funding and completed the following projects. Oops. This thing. Oh, good Lord. Yeah, just, yeah, you're killing me. All right. Let's do this. Okay. So they replaced the, so. There we go. Okay. So they, they've actually done some of the following upgrades. They've put new patio furniture, lighting and fans. They extended the bar top, replaced refrigeration and they added new paint and decor in the bar area. The, in twenty twenty-four, the Golf Course Advisory Committee approved and completed projects in the clubhouse using capital funding from Sierra Golf Management, the Smokehouse and the city to enhance the restaurant and banquet facilities. We replaced the air conditioning units, completed remodel of both the men's and women's restroom. I'll pause there because that, as you know, that was a big darn deal. I think when I got here, I, I think my phone, I had to, had, must say, must be two calls per week about the bathrooms at the golf course and I haven't gotten any calls for a long time about that. As a matter of fact, I think I spoke to a couple of the service clubs and when I mentioned that, they all applauded each time. So I think that's a big deal for us. It's a big win for us. We also, they also complete, did a refurbishment of the bar flooring and also refurbished the banquet room doors. Upcoming in twenty twenty-five, we're going to have a Fourth of July golf tournament and then our advisory committee will accept nominations. Again, I think the advisory committee expires in this coming August. Some of the finances, you, as we've talked about previously, we've, we put into the capital budget seventy-five thousand a year and then we also do a rollover with any excess money that was realized from savings that once we paid off the debt for the golf course. Right now, we, it's give or take thirty-two thousand that's available. We have to look at encumbrances, but it's a pretty accurate number. It's for informational purposes for the, for this and I'll take, take any questions anybody might have.
Thank you for that report. Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gagos, Director Abir. The amount of money that the city is collecting is, is to the tune of what, what are we collecting after the lease and all the rounds? Do we have an idea of what that is?
We don't, last year, I think we had about forty-two thousand dollars. I remember that we rolled over and I'm not sure, I mean, as far as the, the rounds right now.
Rounds, we know what the lease is more or less. If we had an idea of what the rounds produced, somewhere in the tune of maybe two hundred thousand with the lease and, and the rounds, I'm assuming.
Yeah. So we're, you're close to that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I wanted to ask, the air conditioning unit out there, you say it's been replaced or no?
Yeah. So there's, there's multiple air conditions and so.
Banquet hall, it hasn't been then.
Yeah, we actually, we did do the banquet hall. We actually didn't replace it, but there's refurbished and one was replaced. We do have, I guess, a line of sight on actually looking at replacing the air conditioning unit in the clubhouse as well, in the pro shop, excuse me. But that's, that's what we're looking at right now. I think there's, there'll be a, another presentation following mine from the advisor, representing the advisory committee. So we can prioritize some of the things that we want to do moving forward. We did get a USGA report and they really emphasized the irrigation, but as we know, we have a certain amount of funds, but we also know that there's still things that we need to do to the building as well. We've got several quotes for the HVAC and actually the city's actually looking into going through and seeing if we can use our, our resources to help facilitate that process.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Mayor Gagos, and thank you, Joseph, for the, for the presentation. I will highlight that this golf course was built in the nineteen nineties alongside many other golf courses with municipalities that were looking into provide this recreation for its constituents or its citizens and residents. Since then, in two thousand and nine, the city got into an agreement with SGM. Well, it's been a long time since that facility has really had any major improvements to that building, right? So as you heard from Director Abir, there are some repairs that have been done, but over a period of thirty-some years, I think you have to, you know, just, you have to think that there's, there's, there's just deferred maintenance. And, and I think a member of our advisory will kind of highlight on that. Hopefully he has an opportunity to, to speak on that, but I just wanted to give you some context as far as what this advisory is looking and trying to make priorities for, for the golf course. It's not only the improvements that have to go alongside the, the actual golf course, the irrigation system, but also the building itself. So with that, I just want to give you guys some context as far as what we're dealing with and why we come before this council requesting any discretionary funds to alleviate those deficiencies that exist today. Thank you, Mayor Gagos.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rodriguez. And just to kind of piggyback on Mayor Protim Rodriguez's comment. So just roughly, you're saying two hundred thousand.
I'd have to look at that number.
Okay, and that doesn't include what we have to pay the airport back? Isn't that like sixty-eight or seventy thousand dollars that we have to pay back on top of that amount?
Mayor, if I may jump in. So the lease agreement, if memory serves me, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, that's what the city receives from. a year. That's what the city receives from SGM, and that's the base lease. And then the city receives $2.75 per round. That revenue historically was, well, one, it was less, and the city had outstanding debt. That debt was paid off a year or so ago. Since then, the city council has directed staff to allocate any, any funds that are left over after all city expenses to go back into capital. The city currently experiences, the golf course pays the airport 64,000 a year. For the benefit of the community, the reason the city pays, the airport pays the golf course is because the golf course sits on 14 acres of land that is owned by the airport that was purchased with FAA funds. So it's still FAA property. And then the city has some additional expenses such as insurance, and there's a couple of other expenses at the city that the golf course pays for. Some of those have to do with, with taxes. The golf course, even though it's city property because it's managed by a private entity, is subject to some taxes, not all taxes. And so the city does, the golf course, I should say, has some expenses. After all expenses are paid for, any remaining revenues are then allocated to the golf course for capital, and that was at the direction of council about a year ago. Historically, the outstanding debt was paid by the golf course plus general fund. Memory serves me, that amount was close to 400,000, slightly less than 400,000, and please no one quote me because I'm going off the top of my head here. I think 364,000 plus the additional expenses such as the airport lease. So the golf course has been heavily subsidized by the general fund for decades. Once the city paid off the debt more recently, that's actually freed up some additional funds, and those are the funds that, again, at the direction of council, that's going to go back into capital. Hopefully, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you for that direction. I will, at this time, open up for public comment. Anyone in the House?
Good evening, Mayor Gagos and council members. My name is Ed McIntyre. I'm the Vice Chair of the Golf Course Advisory Committee. I'm here at the behest of the committee to convey our comments to you at the, at this annual report. We want to thank the council for dedicating revenue that is generated by the golf course to stay at the golf course. This facility is worth somewhere between 10 and 20 million. It would be at least that much to build it new. It was about 10 million in total cost with principal and interest over the term of the debt. So this is probably the most expensive asset that the city has right now. It's 35 years old, and because of the debt burden that the city incurred, there wasn't any maintenance money to be had. And so there is a huge amount of deferred maintenance out there. The air conditioning system is second only to the bathrooms in terms of complaints. And we know that there are organizations that are going to cancel if we don't get our air conditioning in place by this summer because it's just too hot. It's dangerous. So we need to address that. But there are many other deferred maintenance issues as well, and you could take the air conditioning system. There's 10, 10 package plants out there, pretty expensive proposition. That should be viewed as a capital expenditure. They, they used up their useful life many years ago. They can't really be fixed anymore. The pans below them are corroded. They just don't last that long. Their actually useful life is about 10 to 15 years, depending upon the amount of use, and that's variable there. So the committee has been, for the most part, working on identifying the deferred maintenance issues. The irrigation has been identified by the USGA as a problem. They say we have issues with our turf, but not to bother with the turf until your irrigation system is fixed because it won't be able to be sustained without a proper irrigation system. And the system's 35 years old. There's technology today that wasn't available then. It will reduce the amount of work effort once this is in place, but it's not inexpensive. We've had some bids, and we have a consultant proposal, and the committee has, has decided to ask the council to fund a consultant study. The potential is about $3 million to reduce the irrigation system. But that system, when it's in place, and we know that's going to come in phases, there isn't that kind of money. And while we are constrained by. We need to look at this and preserving it. I mean, I think it's timely. We just got through talking about two other buildings that are going to be demolished because of deferred maintenance issues. Now, they also had functional obsolescence and other issues. Not like, our golf course is something to be proud of. It's an asset to the community. We really need to focus on maintaining that. So before we go any further, the committee asked me to ask you to consider doing a joint workshop with the committee so we can get clear direction for priorities on the council. We don't want to go in a direction the council's not interested in. We've been working for two years. We've compiled a lot of information. We'd like to present that in a workshop setting and then get consensus for direction from the council. So I would be happy to meet with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim and our leadership to look at scope, look at setting, and maybe present a workshop so that new council members, as well as council, existing council members can see what's going on out there and what we've done, maybe sometime after budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McIntyre, for that informative report. Anyone else? Public comment? Any online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I will close public comment at this time. Bring it back to my colleagues. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gagos. And again, I just want to thank our Vice Chair McIntyre for speaking on behalf of the advisory. I will mention that, that the building has about eight units, I think, if memory serves me right. And trying to put all those units at one time are very costly. You can't do them all in one year, especially with the capital, the capital improvement allocations that are given in the tune of 75,000 because there's other items that need to be also addressed. So I think the advisory's concern is at what point do we look at this and we say, should we take care of this dilapidated units, or do we do them one at a time according to our budget and what we have? So this could be facing potential issues down the road because, again, of the deferred maintenance. But that would be a decision that this body would take and give us direction as an advisory to see how we can better spend those dollars, if any. And that's all I have. Thank you again, Mayor Gagos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Zachariah.
Just more for, I guess, Alphit's, for Alphito, as a clarification, because when we say capital improvements, and one of the things was listed, like the chairs and stuff, is there a clear indication when we say improvements? Is it, is it the Parkway? Is it the greens? And who has the, you know, the responsibility to add? I mean, if the golf course management, they want to decide to replace the greens, do they have full discretion of that? Is that still something that the council has discretion over?
So, you know, one of the things that's come up just in the recent past is that the contract is actually a little bit silent on that. However, we've kind of made an informal decision if there's anything attached to the building. This is city-owned property, like we would do, you know, a rental property. So that's why the city has stepped in to look at the HVACs because they're attached. No, the SGM would not have carte blanche to go ahead and replace the greens without, they don't do anything without our approval first, at least from the advisory and the city. But yeah, that's one of the areas where there's a little bit of gray area because we were looking at Amendment Nine. But I did go back and research. I didn't see anything that specifically addressed, hey, who does what and what's defined, but that's one of the gaps for sure.
So with that, I guess, in their, in their budget that it's proposed is that, so capital improvements are, that's not really in their operating budget? That's something that's coming back to us to say, we kind of need to fund it because it's our building?
Yeah, and they've actually contributed quite a bit, you know, from their own funds just to keep it running. But we were also, for some of the major things, we've actually provided oversight to them. But we have made a decision. If it's attached, it's ours, and we need to, and we can pull from that capital improvement budget as well.
I guess with all three entities putting money into capital, does that muddy the waters as far as if they're putting in money for capital, but it's our money from the city that's only going to fund the AC units, for instance?
No, it's not, no. So it's not designated that way or segregated in any shape, shape that way.
Thank you. Councilmember Montez.
Yeah, so I guess my question is just on, well, first, I want to thank the committee, and I think we have a couple council members that are on that committee for everything do, and everything that you're doing, Director Abir. I just, my question, I guess, is process. Is this separate? The request is to have kind of like a separate capital improvement plan discussion outside of our normal process for everything? Because we do have a process for capital improvement plan, which my understanding, this would or should fall under. I don't know if we have anything or we haven't, right? I know that the committee is relatively new.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we might not have had that information. So is that, I'm just trying to find out if that is the request to have this kind of parted out, you know, from other capital projects that we have, and is that desire? Because the information is good to have, right? And that's why we created the committee. But is that my understanding?
So, so the, and again, the committee's new. So we're kind of learning as we go. However, I think what the request is, and is from the advisory, you have the advisory committee, and then you also have the city. So actually, the request is that there was a request to do a workshop to talk about prioritizing some of these issues. And I think the two big ones are HVAC and irrigation. And there's, you heard, we could go anywhere from $1 to 3-plus million. And I think, you know, we have to be very conscious of how much money we actually have in the fund, I think, because that's the thing. And so, you know, do we want to do everything piecemeal? Or is, does the council want to give us direction to go tap into the general fund? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just saying that's, that's what's presented on the table today.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Yeah, I was just going to highlight on the, like, the historical background of how, you know, the term initially spelled out, the capital improvements were, were planned to serve as a guide, especially like $50,000 per calendar year. And mainly, it didn't really spell out what exactly, it was for the lease premise, but it wasn't specific to like areas, right? I think there was a year that we brought, we had a report that it was allocated to golf carts. Well, that's not, that's personal property. That's not real property. It's not really our property, right? So we want improvements to the actual course. But again, that enhanced the player ability of getting a better experience, but that still didn't really, you know, satisfy the capital improvement definition of improving the actual, you know, course and/or building. So I think after the Eighth Amendment, or I believe in the Ninth Amendment, we added the additional 25,000. The 50,000 still comes directly from the leasing. We are just adding the additional 25 to make it a total of 75, if memory serves me right. The other two parties are still within that same scope of the original lease. Is that correct? Yeah. So that's just some context on how that goes. Bunkers were involved in that, greens, sprinklers, anything that improves obviously our asset, which is the golf course and/or the building. But I don't think much was done to the building over the last term of our, of our agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Montez.
Yeah, so I'm not trying to say this isn't important or anything, and it sounds like there's a couple things, right? The, the lease or the agreement allows for some monies, and we've, as a council, decided, okay, anything above what we make, any excesses, go back in there. Usually, that would go back into the general fund, right? So we've made that decision. But my, so I'm just going to be honest, my concern is that if we take this separate from the regular capital improvement plan, you're going to potentially make some different decisions, and, but they will impact everything else. And so my preference, and this is just my preference, would be to take them together, right? So not part this out so that, because you're talking about potentially going into general fund or some other monies. It's potential, right? I'm not saying that's what you're asking right now. But we do have the process for that. Again, the information, I think, would be, would be really good to have so we know. So when we do have the capital improvement plan that we're discussing, we have that information before time, ahead of time, right? But I, again, this is just, just thinking out loud, my concern is that if you part that out from everything else, you're going to make some different decisions. When you have two things going on at the same time, you have a road, you have the golf course. So what are you going to do? If you're only thinking about the golf course, okay, this is, this is what we're going to do. But again, we have that process for a reason. And again, and again, the council is going to decide what they want to do. But that would be my concern, to have this as a separate conversation. Again, receiving the information is great, but I would just say we can, we keep it with our normal process for capital improvement plan.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Zachariah.
And I guess Jose maybe can help me with the history part of it, because I know you're good at that, is, so in 2009, when we entered the agreement, has the money that the city's been applying, has it stayed the same, or has it increased? With cost of living, because you're saying, you know, to repair something, to repair the AC units from 2009 to 2025 has dramatically increased. Is there any plans to keep up with this, you know, are we stuck in now this contract from 2009 essentially to, where we can't, that number needs to increase? I mean, I think it should be agreed that the money that the city's putting in, or both sides maybe are putting in, has to increase just because of the simple cost. I mean, everything is going up. So the amounts that we're receiving, the cost per player, is that going up at a rate that's, I guess, equivalent to just the cost of living increase?
If that question's directed me.
I mean, you're kind of the history, I don't know if it's Alphito, who's the best?
I just want to make sure I can, yeah. So, good question, Councilmember Zachariah. So initially, the city held a capital improvement account, but it was the operator that was designated to put that money at 50, no less than $50,000 into the capital improvements. Up until the last amendment or two, did the city then allocate additional funds to be able to be, but it wasn't, it wasn't since the inception of 2009. This is as of recent, I think, since we had our last agreement, which was 2023. So what the city decided after it paid its bond was to allocate the additional funds generated from the lease agreement and the rounds to the golf course. And I think this body agreed on moving that, having that discretion to do that. I think our Vice Chair had requested that we have a conversation of the actual, let's look at the whole assessment of what you have before you. It's not a, it's an advisory. It's just giving you, it's advice as far as in recommendations of what it sees based on what the committee assessed, and/or the city may go out and assess per the HVACs or what have you. But then you bring it here, and obviously, to Councilmember Montez's point, yeah, if that's the direction of this body, then that's what we'll do. But we want to have, we're fairly new. We want to know what our guidance is outside of that discretionary income or revenue that's given to that, to the golf course. I hope that may have answered.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it just because, again, with the contract renewals coming up, and just being that it's, we're in this together, essentially with the management and the city as well, is, should that be something that's also addressed to say, instead of, I just don't like solid numbers, because when you say it's 50,000, and then it's just, we don't have that maybe over the next four years, five years of the contract, like a 2%, 3% increase every year, just, just to go for the cost of living?
Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, I will say that when there is a golf course, I mean, we're talking about a lot of improvements, not only to the dwelling, there's also improvements that have to be done to the course itself, right? So I don't know that that amount is sufficient. That's a good question, but it hasn't been done for many years. So now we've caught up to this deferred maintenance, and yes, there's more money being allocated now, but is it enough to catch up to where we're at today? And I think that's the, the premise of the, why we're initiating a conversation to say, hey, if this is what you want and keep it within this realm of this amount of money, then that's fine. Obviously, the advisory needs that direction, and that's why we would like to pursue that mutual workshop to be able to address that. And again, as Vice Chair McIntyre said, it wouldn't have to be the whole body. It could be me, Mayor Gagos, Vice Chair, maybe another representative as well, and Director Abir, maybe City Manager.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, so I want to understand better, I guess. So right now, we're talking about combining everything together and the money factor. So right now, we're talking about combining everything together and the money factor?
Mike.
The money factor as far as dividing the, the course versus the, the building? Are we talking about putting everything together and then working it out as one?
I, I don't, yeah.
Sure.
I will try to take a stab at that, if that's okay, Mayor. I think there are a couple of options on the table right now, and I apologize if I misspeak, so please correct me. I believe that the Golf Course Committee is requesting a joint Golf Course Committee and City Council meeting after the, after the budget process this, this, for the fiscal year that's beginning in, on July 1st. And at that meeting, it sounds to me that the goal would be to establish some type of protocol to manage expectations. As Director Abir said, the committee is relatively new, and when we established the committee, it was great in concept, but I think we are going to through some growing pains in terms of who is responsible for what, in terms of the committee versus the council. The city has enjoyed a very good relationship with SGM, and I definitely don't want anyone to believe that, that, that there's any finger pointing going on here. However, now that the city is starting to contribute some capital funds, the, I believe the big question is, is who identifies the priorities in terms of how to expend those funds and who serves as the project lead? From my perspective, the project lead should be the city. We're using public dollars, and it seems appropriate that the city serves as the, as the lead agency, considering it's the city golf course and it's public money. That, that to me seems, my perspective, pretty straightforward. I believe what Councilmember Montes has suggested is, let's not separate the golf course from the rest of the citywide capital improvement program, which that workshop is typically held in May. So in about a month, I'll say. And the reason for that is, if you look at the golf course in a silo, it may be easier to only look at the golf course, whereas there are probably other public facility needs, that if, if, if the entire gamut of public facilities is presented to council, maybe the council may have a different opinion and say, well, maybe we should put money in X. I'm going to say swimming pool park, just for example, I'm not saying that's where it's going, that's just an example, versus the golf course, because the, the bucket of money is probably not going to grow. We, we're dealing with the same bucket of money, and the question before the council will be, this is not something you have to answer this evening, but at some point, where does council want to allocate finite dollars? And so the question, I think, tonight is, should, should that be discussed as a one-off? Or should it be discussed as a whole, when council's looking at the rest of the organization? And I do want to add just two points of clarification. So hopefully that answers your question, Councilmember. Earlier, I said that the city, that the city's debt on the golf course was approximately 400,000, it was actually 328,000 per year. So I'm correcting myself. The second part, in terms of deferred maintenance, I think this council and city staff have recognized that we do have a large amount of deferred maintenance in the city, evidenced by the discussion a short time ago with the two buildings that we are now discussing. The city staff fully acknowledges that we have a lot of deferred maintenance. These are, these are some of these, that's why we're having some of these difficult discussions. With that being said, in the current fiscal year, we actually established a new budget or a new line item that council has already approved, which we call the Deferred Maintenance Account, for these very reasons. I don't believe the city's done a, I'll say, an excellent job, or even a very good job of addressing its deferred maintenance. And that's why, in the current fiscal year that we're operating right now, we've actually started putting money, and a couple of things that we've replaced, just to highlight that we've replaced two of the 16 HVAC units at the police department. We've replaced two of the HVAC units at Fire Station 57. We are currently in the process of redoing the roof at the Airport Administration Building. We've started setting money aside to redo the roof at Public Works Admin Building. We have painted the halls of City Hall, I'll say A-Hall of City Hall, we've done the FASIA, but we're starting to address some of these deferred maintenance items that, that are easy to put on the back burner. But we, but what you're seeing now is you're starting to see, when you have so much deferred maintenance, we're to the point where we have two buildings that we probably have no good options but to demolish. And I think what Councilmember Rodriguez is saying, and I don't want to speak on your behalf, but at some point, we have to put the golf course probably slightly up on the to-do list, because if not, we definitely don't want the golf course to get to that condition. Again, I'm not saying it is, but we have a lot of buildings that are all kind of in the same condition, and I think it's our job. And again, that's why we're having these tough discussions, whereas maybe historically, it's easier to sweep them under the rug. So with that, I will be quiet, Mayor, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, City Manager, and I'm just going to chime in here. And like I've had my airport commissioner constantly talking to me about the airport, and they're just like the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and he wants to have a meeting with the council about priorities out at the golf course. And I feel that Councilmember Montes brings up a good point about process and protocol that we have placed in the city. And because of that, it keeps us all marching to the same beat. If we pull this out, then I know I'm going to have the airport commission saying, hey, we want time with you too. I know I'm going to get the soccer leagues, they're talking about goalposts, and I've heard it quite a bit in the last three months, concerns, we have the splash people coming to us. And I, and I know, I take pride in, in our golf course and our facility, anything. I've been asking for five years about the West Side Center, everybody wants to rent that, people want to put programs in, there's mirrors all across the wall of that. Councilwoman, he has asked about Redbury Youth Hut. So if you take one out of the pot, what happens to everybody else in the pot? That's why you have a budget for each department, to kind of look at capital improvement projects, and you kind of put them by priority, prioritize them, and say, which one do you feel is the most important, which one is best for the community, which one is used the most? And that's, I think, when council has that opportunity, the one-on-one, and it's public comment, people come and can give their two cents, and then we take it in and we make decisions. And so those are my comments. Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos, and I want to thank all of your comments coming down the council, appreciate everybody's comments. Just to touch on, on our city manager's point there, regarding our, our recreational facilities, right? I think going into anything that we build, whether it's a park, the city knows going well into this, any, any park that they built, that it's, it's going to be heavily subsidized, because that's what it is, we're doing it for the benefit of the community. And however you generate through any type of property taxes or development impact fees, whatever, it'll never be enough to be able to pay for that park and sustain it, right? There's always a, a level of subsidy. Here you have an airport that leases its hangars and generates some revenue to try to offset that cost. Well, the golf course is no different. The golf course, I think it's one of your assets that has a revenue-producing mechanism that allows you to utilize those funds to, again, address those deferred maintenance. So I don't think we're asking to go outside of what we already do with our capital improvement plan, it's rather, let's assess and make sure that we're up to par, and the monies that are available through these, whether it's a lease or rounds, or the, the increase of revenues, this council has already diverted some of that discretionary funds to do that. I, I think we're simply requesting that, hey, you advise us, or you put us in this advisory, there isn't a, a parks advisory yet, right? So the assessment of what the parks need, there hasn't been anything, but you do have one here, because it's part of the agreement, that we must have an advisory group. And up until 2000, I think this last amendment, I think 2023, we started becoming that advisory group. Here we are today, fairly new, just wanting to get clear direction. I think we're getting it now, but the, the vice chair is requesting a mutual workshop so that we know clear what reins we have and what not. Yes, ultimately, the city council and city staff has a discretion as far as what it does with its, because it's public funds, clearly agree with that. We just want to make sure our process so that we can deliver that advice and or recommendations directly to you. But I, I do want to make sure I point out that right now, the, the, the golf course is generating sufficient revenues to be able to upkeep some of these dilapidated and/or deferred maintenance issues that we have. We just don't know to what extent, and that's what we want to make sure we present.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez. Councilmember Zachariah.
I mean, I guess in, in agreeance and in disagreement, I mean, if we look at the golf course, essentially like the airport, it's, maintenance is required, because if, for instance, that runway goes and now it's not meeting regulations, nobody's going to want to rent a spot there, we can't use it, it becomes completely worthless. Whereas maybe a community center, its deferred maintenance, it still can be used as the space that they use, whether it's his, you know, the Parks and Rec staff, or whether it's being rented for events. So I would say that in, in handling the golf course, essentially similar to the airport, it's, I would say the, the deferred maintenance is a little more concerning, because if greens go bad, then nobody wants to golf there, go, you know, then now it's completely useless. It's not like you can just use the space for, I don't think people are renting it necessarily for some of the things that you would kind of get. So I would say, looking at it in that regard, I would treat it like the airport, who has the discretion, who makes the decisions essentially how that money is spent? I know they have a committee that necessarily isn't, you know, making those decisions, but it's still the city that's kind of leading some of that direction, and mostly because of the, the size of those funds. I mean, it's not where you're talking about small amounts, I mean, we're usually talking about millions of dollars, where you're talking about the airport or the golf course as far as what they need. But I'm still more concerned about the long term is, let's say we gave the 3 million, and today we made it great, I don't know that the plan is in place to, to keep up with that as costs increase. That's my main concern. Thank you.
Okay. Parks Director Abir, do you have direction? Or just the information?
Well, let me just say, I, I just feel like when we made this, the Amendment Nine, there was nothing. I mean, we did a couple of extensions, as you all know, and I don't think Councilman Zachariah was here at the time, but we went through it, a, a long, long negotiation. And so I do feel I have a, a level of comfort that we're at least directionally correct. And we do, we are creating revenue and generating revenue to address these things. I think it's just a matter of prioritizing what we want to do. If we want to stick with the money that we're generating, I'm good with that, I'm good either way. But I'm just saying, we, we have, if you look at where we were to where we are today, I think I made a joke about not getting calls about the restrooms, I'm not getting those calls, and that's a good thing. So I think we're, we're, we've made a lot of progress, and, you know, we still have work to do, but I'm, I'm very comfortable where we're at.
Okay, thank you for your report. Moving on to E3, Domestic Well Mitigation Program, this is going to be presented by our city engineer, and this is one of my favorite subjects, so yay. Bring it on. You're on mute still.
I apologize, when I shift over to presentation, I lose the audio button. Anyway, here we go. Anyway, this is a domestic well mitigation program. A little bit of background, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, GSP for short, requires groundwater sustainability agencies to attain groundwater sustainability by the year 2040. This requirement applies to the sub-basin as a whole, rather than by GSA or GSP. The requirement was, based upon staff's understanding, a trade-off between immediate balance of the sub-basin versus recognition that water, the water table will drop for a while before GSP projects and programs resulted in stabilization. Immediate sustainability might result in economic hardship within the sub-basin. We're, we're, the sub-basin was so far out of whack that if you attempted to go ahead and balance it, a lot of land would have to come out of production immediately. So this is working up to that, allowing some land removal to go and become fallow for some projects to go in place to have retention ponds, or to install, as an example, water meters or recharge basins. A little bit more of the background, there was a memorandum of understanding between GSAs that was included in the revised GSP submitted to the state on March 21st, 2023. That was to the Department of Resource, Water Resources or DWR. That was not a commitment, it did discuss potential mitigation measures, but it did commit GSAs to working together. Now, the DWMP itself, when complete, is intended to provide assistance to domestic and municipal well owners. It's interesting that we do call out municipal well owners in the actual GSP, because the city is a municipal well owner. The program is designed to provide bottled water when, when somebody reports that they have a dry well. Also, it is intended to provide $30,000 to drill a new well. At present, this is just the hole in the ground, it's not intended to replace equipment or anything else. And it's not intended to reimburse for wells that were essentially at the end of the life for other reasons, such as wear and tear, broken casing, what have you. The DWMP would remain in effect until the year 2040, when the sub-basin reaches sustainability. Participation in the DWMP, there, there are seven GSAs and at least two sets of opinions on how the DWMP costs would be assigned and shared. There are, there are GSAs that believe that they should not participate, there are GSAs that acknowledge that need to participate, and I, I, I think that the city of Bader is possibly in the area where we, we believe that we participate, but on a very minimal level, and that's actually for council to decide, not for me. There has been two approaches that have been brought up in the coordination meetings with the other GSAs. There's a proximity-based approach, and what that exactly means has not been well-established, at least not for me to go ahead and understand it, and that, that's in working with the working, coordination working group and our consultants, one of which is kind of acting like a mediator for the group, presenting how other agencies have done this. They actually had a number of confidential meetings with the various GSAs to see where they stood. Through those meetings with GSAs, it became clear that there was a fairly wide differential in how GSAs viewed the, the DWMP and how it should be accommodated. The potential impact to the city following a proximity-based method is, it's dependent upon how many wells actually go dry within proximity, the proximity, whatever the proximity is determined to be. I quickly did some calculations based upon data that I have on, in the files, which goes back about six and a half months or so. And it showed that we've had about four wells go dry in the city, and probably another four wells within about two miles. If, if it was a proximity-based methodology, following the standards that we have, we would be looking at $120,000 to assist in well drilling, plus water deliveries and other administrative costs that go along with that. And depending upon the definition of proximity, those costs could increase beyond, you know, what I've said. I think that two miles probably would, would get it taken care of, however, in terms of being conservative. And then there's the proportional-based approach. The city currently, per the calculations from our, our, one of our consultants, David's Engineering, has estimated that the city, the city has a negative 2,600 acre feet, meaning we're, we're pumping 2,600 more feet than the, than our GSA recharges, using various different methods, whether it's rainfall or, or, or something similar, water moving into the basin. The sub-basin as a whole has about 116,200 acre feet in the negative category. When we look at the 2,600 versus the 116,200, the city has a 2.24% impact. The projects are, right now that we've got going, we've, well, we've completed one basin recharge that we're in partnership with the Madera Irrigation District, that's been complete for a number of years and actually been doing its job. And the water meters, we're at the 99.2% number, but they're kind of, kind of precise, but I decided to go ahead and do that for a reason, to say, we're getting up into that area, saying we're, we're, we're that close. So we're, between the basin and the meters, we're, we're greater than 99.2% complete. So you look at that and compare it to 2.2% proportion of value, we could, we could argue that our impacts are less than that. However, some of the impacts are based upon historical averages. If you go back to 2011 or so, we didn't have meters, and we were pumping an awful lot more water than we were now. But it's looking like we may begin the program about 2025. So I think the 2.24% might be a bit high for the methodology that's being used. In any case, the proportional-based approach, we'd have to have about 125 wells within the sub-basin go dry within a year with a 2.2% impact. uh, with a 2.2% impact to a, for that to exceed the value of even three wells within the city's GSA. Based upon the previous screening, we showed four wells within six and a half months. That obviously equates to somewhat more than four wells in a year. So during the last six and a half months, the data suggests we've had about 25 dry wells. That might be about 50 or so if you went to an annual method. Uh, if the total number increases, dry wells in the city will also likely increase. Continuing on with proportional base, the proportional value of 2.2% is based upon the water model. So any changes of that would have to be supported by the data that goes into the model. And again, the the city projects are 99% complete, which is the very base in the water meters. Uh, the last four meters are anticipated to be complete within about a year. We have, I think, two projects going on right now installing water meters. And staff in in the meetings I've attended, I've made it clear to the coronal coordination work group, the consultants, that subject council concern, uh, concurrence, uh, the the preferred method is the proportional based. I, you know, I, it's been my opinion that the, that the other method that was presented is, uh, is not fair to the city or probably not fair. I can't state anything with absolute certainty. The funding, if appropriate budgets are built into the next rate study, there would be no impact to the general fund. In other words, uh, the funding would come from the water fund. Uh, the water fund benefits from a dropping water table. As such, it would, it would likely assist in this. Then understanding what is, what appropriate is maybe a moving target until the water table is stabilized. We just don't know. You know, this year has been a good year in terms of rainfall so far. I'm curious as to what our next, uh, review of our wells will show in November of, uh, of this year. We compare water well, um, ability to pump twice a year. Uh, we we compare in the spring and we compare in the fall. Uh, the fall is the, uh, is the time of year where we find out the lowest point at which the water, uh, drops to. Counsel consideration for tonight, um, the approach preference proximity proportional, if proximity, are we, are we stating that that will hold to the city limits and is there any leeway? If proportional, do we accept the water model or do we, uh, push towards moving towards zero percent as projects are substantially complete, uh, subject to the model indicate any, or any projects? It is possible that as they, as they rework the model, every five years or so, the model will show that things aren't what they anticipated. They're getting better and better with modeling. They're adding new water well, uh, new measurements or new water wells with measuring devices in there to understand how things are working. So this, this isn't an absolute right now, but it's, um, it it's the best that we've got. And then a little bit of a note, oh, oh, anyway, any leeway on that? A little bit of a note, leeway is a topic because there are seven GSAs with their own points of view. Uh, I've I've noticed that at least two or three GSAs have have remained relatively silent. Others have been, have provided input. Uh, I've only really jumped in when I felt like it was going the wrong, wrong direction. I wanted to hold them to something that gets us closer to proportional base or actual impacts on the water table. At one time, there was discussion about, uh, the the acre, our acreage compared to the total. I think that we're in a place right now where, uh, it's the the impacts on the water table that is is most beneficial because once we're done with projects, on paper, we're done. Uh, the recommended action is to provide input regarding preferred approach or other items as may be discussed. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that report. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mary Agos. And Keith, thank you again for that report. So it seems like, you know, staff is is leaning towards the proportionate cost responsibility. Do we have an idea of what that would look like more or less if if, uh, as far as cost in comparison to those three wells? The reason why I ask is because, um, I know you mentioned that, um, you know, we're, we are negative 2,600 acre feet. We're almost completed with all of our metering. Um, we are adding additional basins. So I mean, the impact on the on the aquifer is minimal. So why is it that the city then would take the position of sharing a cost that's not proportional to our, to our, uh, deficit that we have, uh, of the basin? So I'm I'm a little, I I'm not too crazy about the proximity, but, you know, more so in in being very proactive and 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 just becoming net zero or beyond the, um, the expectations of our aquifer, especially the, the, um, the deficit that exists today. So it, do we have any, can you provide any like costs on on the proportional deal? I mean, is there any like examples of what that would look like?
They, our consultants, uh, at the, at the last coordination meeting, they were tempted to go ahead and make a comparison, uh, from another sub basin and there's dramatically less number of dry wells. Um, I I think that we're seeing, uh, substantially more dry wells. But when I, when I noted that we've seen about 25 dry wells in the last six and a half months across the entire basin, if you take two and a quarter percent on that, you know, that that says that we're we're going to be equivalent to, you know, paying a well for one well or less in in terms of impacts. So that's, that's a far cry from, from the three or four that we've seen. So in terms of cost, yes, uh, it's it's ballparking, but it's it's a, it's probably $30,000 plus for the city in terms of that. But if we, if we are, if we, if we do get to a position where we say we're we're approaching zero and we shouldn't be charged after a certain date, then then that 30,000 heads toward zero.
Makes sense to me.
Is that all? Mayor Prochim Rodriguez, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Montez.
I got a question on that, Keith. So, um, it, there, there's a lot of variables, right? So like you mentioned that, you know, we had, we had a lot of rain, right? So that could impact our, uh, impact, um, like it impact our impact to the sub basin, right? Sounded right in my head. I don't know if it sounded right to everybody else. But so say we have a drought, right? And we've finished all our projects, but we are, uh, uh, contributing to overdraft, right? So then does this model get updated every year? Because we can say, well, yeah, we're done, but then we have an impact. I mean, I guess it would be proportional to to everybody else, but it wouldn't be zero. It could potentially, right? So I mean, it's hard to say, well, on this date, we will never have an impact again.
On paper, if we're doing the proportional approach and and the model says we're at zero, it it shouldn't change. So regardless of whether we're in a drought or we're not in a drought, I, it's my belief that the city uses about the same amount of water from year to year to year. There's, there's nothing really that causes us to use more water. I mean, in a dramatic fashion as i- if we have a hot year, we use more water. But if we're in a, if we're in a drought and it's simply not raining and we have a normal year, nothing should.
Less credit for recharge at that point if there's no water.
Well, we are, our, our, I I do not believe that our calculation should change at all during droughts. Now, what happens during a drought is the farmers outside the city pump more. When we're, there are two areas, there are white areas and and forgive me, I forget what the other ones are considered, but the areas that have surface water, they, they will, they will continue to use the surface water if the Madera Irrigation District is being successful in causing them to to use the surface water. But if if we're in a drought situation and and Madera Irrigation District, MID for short, they have to cut back on their deliveries because they might deliver water six or eight months. But if during a drought, they're forced to drop back to four months, the farmers still need to use that water. So they will, um, so they'll, they'll see additional impacts. So their impacts will go up. All ours are this, are are probably about the same. When we move into the white areas where there is not, uh, surface water deliveries, those farmers, if it's a hot year, they will pump more. Uh, when we get into a drought situation, we will see the the water table dropping faster, but we probably aren't doing too much to affect that.
Okay, well, then I would, I would affirm that the proportionate cost is the way that I would want to go and move towards zero. Eventually, we wouldn't be, we're not contributing to any overdraft, so we shouldn't be penalized for that.
That's all. Okay, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Yes, and Keith, from what I understand is we may present this to the other GSAs, but is there a, there could be a reluctance on their end to accept that cost responsibility, correct?
There could be, yes.
So we're
It could be robust.
Yeah, we're just making a good argument that based on what we, the draft that, uh, the overdraft that that's caused by on our end is so so minimal that we shouldn't have that big of a responsibility of cost because we're taking measures to to offset that deficit. Whereas, you know, the majority of the burden is happening surrounding us, you know, the white areas and or other areas that you called out. But, um, I, I, I'm just, I I guess I'm curious how they're going to react to this. Because I'm sure when it comes to cost, they want to, they want to spread this evenly or proportional to, I I'm not sure if it's acreage or what have you. But again, I think it's more on the impact on the aquifer, not so much on the fact that we have this land mass or this acreage and we're not big, uh, contributors to the deficit. So I, again, I'm in agreement, in agreement with the, uh, proportional. But I'm sure that they, they may not accept that also and will have to come back at some point.
Yeah, i- if if we go down that road, I I I tend to think that we will need to have another discussion where staff meets with 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 council. Because I, I, if I get more information, it might help to go ahead and say that proportional is 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 confirmed, is confirmed as the way to go. I do not believe that going with proximity will work, especially if it expands beyond the city limits. We do have a lot of, a lot of houses outside the city limits that are on wells. And we're in, when, when, when I see four of them within two miles, uh, and and I know there are more coming, um, just in this, this isn't, this is last six and a half months in a good rain year. When we get into a bad rain year, we'll, we'll see the water table drop as the, as the farmers pump more and those impacts will go to us. So the, the belief, the the discussions around a proximity based system is that, the, the, the GSAs should be mitigating for their impacts. Now, proximity based on a system where we have, uh, per the model, zero, close to zero impacts, it it doesn't, it doesn't jive. It doesn't make sense that we would be mitigating anybody outside the city and it and it, and I don't know that it makes sense inside the city if the water table is dropping from, from forces outside the city limits.
Yeah, and I'll finish with this. Thank you, Keith. I I would hope that this body would be very assertive in its argument because moving forward, I think this will be a very, um, hot topic coming back to us. But again, I think that if we can provide the data that shows, I mean, obviously, you you're bringing that now um, and what we're evaluating, I think it certainly puts us in a very strong position for us to, to, to defend it and and that we're not, we're not impacting the aquifer as much as you do. And the proximity, as you mentioned, as more and more people have these dry wells and we're having to bear that cost, I mean, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for something that we are proactively already doing to try to keep us at zero. So those are my comments. Again, I I, I concur with the recommendation on the, uh, the, uh, proportionate cost responsibility and, uh, that that would be my, my position there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez. At this time, I open up for public comment.
Are you back again? I'm here and, um, I was the, uh, commissioner of the Madera County Plan, uh, Water Commission for seven years during its existence and helped preside over the groundwater management plan that was put in place that we're still operating under. And what I would like to ask, um, Mr. Helmut is, in the methodology for determining negative, did we get credit for the water we put back into the aquifer from the sewer?
You mean the water that goes out to the wastewater treatment plant?
Exactly.
I asked that question three or four years ago. It's it's built into the model, but not in the way that you might think. The same way, you know, you can also ask that question about the groundwater basins. It 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 all works in, but yes, it 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 is, it's worked in, but just not in the way that, I I think that anybody would understand. I'd have to go back to that explanation, but they, they let me know that it works in in the way that they in, in the methodology that they use to do it. I can bring back that specific answer to council, if if council so desires. But it's worked in.
I think it's important that you do that because, um, we're pumping about 5,000 acre feet of water at the wastewater treatment plant back into the sewer. Our sewer, um, wastewater treatment plant managers can tell you the exact amount of of gallons back in, and the farmers are using that water to irrigate their crops. In fact, that area has been perched, in other words, too much water. And there's talk about locating that water further south through a canal. But the city should definitely get credit for that. Uh, and that would put us in a positive position, not a negative position. Uh, when we did start the drought, um, efforts to reduce here, um, although, all of the water that was reduced was landscaping water. It was not people using water inside their house. That hasn't changed. Then I think that'll be borne out if you get a report from your sewer manager. City, City of Fresno gets credit for their water going back into the aquifer and has been for years. So they get a quid pro quo of water coming out of, um, Bryant. Long story short, uh, I've always, I mean, it's, it's there. We don't, we do not contribute to the deficit at all in Madera. If if we are contributing in any way, it would be through agricultural activity, irrigated agricultural activity that's within the, within the city of Madera. You, you might have to balance that because we have several hundred acres that under conditional use permit or lease.
Yes, the, uh, when you look at it, the fact that we have two.
So I think that you, I mean, if, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez said, we need, you need to be aggressive and you really do. If you don't fight, you won't get. And the other GSAs are fighting like crazy. And it's the agricultural industry that's been overdrafting here for 40 years and they know it. And this groundwater management is a way to balance that aquifer. And the city isn't a, is not a participant in the negative. It's in the positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, for your comments. Bringing, at this time, I close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. City engineer, do you have the direction that the council would like you to look at?
I believe I do. We will be going with proportional. And it, it, you know, one of my questions was any leeway? Sounds likely push until they push back.
Thank you for that, um, comment in that report. Next item, city clerk.
Is council member reports, announcements, future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized in which meet other requirements for action.
All right. Thank you for that. I will start to my left, um, council member Vegas.
Oh, nothing to report.
Thank you. Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mary Agos. I did just want to highlight a big award that the city of Madera received. It was the Blueprint Award of Excellence for the planning project at the village of Elmengrove, uh, that specific plan. Uh, this again is, as we know it, is Village D. Again, our city manager was in appearance alongside. Uh, again, our city manager was in appearance alongside Councilwoman Evans. We had, uh, the folks from Village D, uh, Norm Ellender, Mr. Fred Fagundes there, receiving the award as well. Just wanted to congratulate the city again because with that, I mean, we can anticipate hopefully in the future, a full build out over 10,000 units that would help the economic growth for our city and our county. So looking forward to that. Again, congratulations to this council, this body that made that happen. And more importantly, to our city manager and staff and all those involved in making sure that this happened. So that's all I have for now. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Mejia.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, I was happy to participate in the Mini Galagaza and Calenda that was hosted by Washington Elementary, uh, alongside, uh, Mayor Caligos. Um, this was the second annual, um, Calenda. There were children, students, educators, parents, community members that came together to make it happen. Uh, the city of Madera police assisted with making sure that everybody stayed on, um, safe along the route. Um, there were live performances by a band, by dance groups, um, um, as far away as Selma, so we had a great time that day. Um, next, May 1st, there's gonna be, uh, March here in Madera. Uh, it starts at 5:00 PM. It's gonna be at the Courthouse Park. And this is an event that has been organized by the May Day Committee, um, that's comprised of nonprofit organizations that include Centro Binacional para el Desarrollo Indígena Oaxaqueño, the American Friends Service Committees, Pan Valley Institute, Latinos Madera Club, Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, the UFW Foundation, alongside with numerous community members that are working together to make sure that on May 1st, Madera is part of the nationwide protest to bring attention to defending immigrant rights and that includes, includes due process and also a standing up for workers' rights. So I hope I see you all there again, May 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Courthouse Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Councilmember Montez.
Follow that. I gotta stop and swing. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Zachariah.
Uh, only this, as a reminder, our, our robotics team is in the championships at Houston right now. So if you want to keep an eye on them, they're gonna start, uh, battling that out. Uh, but other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans.
I should bring my mic down, don't you think? Okay, first I want to say congratulations as well to the city and yes, we were all there. And it is something to be seen for us to be able to receive an Almanor, I mean, not the Almanor Award, but the, um, the Blueprint of Excellence Award. So that was something great. Also, I was able to attend the, um, the missions, um, tiny homes ribbon cutting ceremony, which was something nice to be able to know that we're going to be able to house, um, homeless and to be able to help to get them up off the streets and to be able to do different programs for them to be able to go into and to better themselves, which is something that we should all hope for and all hope to be able to help as well with the homeless. I was also able to go out to the college where they did the ribbon cutting ceremony for the, um, for the veterans there. On Saturday, April the 26th, I will be the keynote speaker for the, um, Relay for Life, and that's gonna be at nine o'clock at Town and Country Park. And also, I want to highlight the, um, Single, the PRM. That's gonna be on May the 3rd and for Single the Mile, and Ms. Alicia Brown is here. And it is a very good event and also will touch many lives. So that's all I have to report tonight. God bless and may each one of you go home safely.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Evans. And I'm gonna be real quick. I just want to give a shout out to our Madera Police Department who received the Lexipol Connect 2024 Gold for excellence in policy maintenance and in training. So congratulations for that. Again, we have Relay for Life next Saturday. We had our Easter egg hunt with our police department and we talked about the missions. Again, these events could not happen without volunteers. Appreciation volunteers for the month of April. So shout out to all those volunteers for those events. Last but not least, um, May 1st, we have our Madera Prayer Breakfast to pray for the entire city and all different organizations and all different entities that are involved in our agencies and throughout the city and county of Madera. And with that, I will, um, bring that back to our city attorney for closed session.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We have one item of closed session tonight. It's G1, Conference Legal Counsel Anticipating Litigation, deciding whether or not to initiate litigation pursuant to Paragraph 407 Division D of Government Code, Section 54956.94 cases. Thank you.
And with that, we will, um, go into closed session. Thank you for, oh, sorry, public comment. Ooh, I forgot that part. I see none online or on Zoom?
Captain, Mayor.
All right. With that, we will be going into closed session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We're coming back from closed session. I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one reportable item out of closed session with regards to Item G1. The city attorney is authorized to initiate litigation to eject airport tenants whose leases have terminated and who have not timely vacated. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:16. And we will see you Wednesday, May 7, 2025. Good night, everyone.